I can call this meeting to order and say over the budget of the week.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome and thank you for coming to part two, actually part five or six, but part two of the public hearing. And I will read the notice. The town of Littleton Board of Selectmen proposes to sell land identified as Mount Eustace Road Tax Map 99 Lot 46 to the Littleton Industrial Development Corporation for a dollar. The land at Mount Eustace Road is 41.96 acre parcel with a 60-foot right-of-way access to Mount Eustace Road on land owned by the town, which the town's transfer station is located on. This sale carries no cost to the town. The second public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 14th, that's today, at 5:00 PM. The Board of Selectmen were authorized by Article 17 of the March 11, 2014 Town Meeting vote is shown below. So we are continuing public input. All the input that we had two weeks ago was recorded. All the input today will be recorded. Any other comments that come regarding this will be recorded and will all become part of our deliberation at a regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting on November 27th, at which point we will decide this matter. Two weeks ago, there were two unanswered questions at the end of the meeting, which I will now answer. One of them was why was the right-of-way path altered? As shown on the map, there was an old route and there was a new route. The reason was the old route was not deemed sufficient to hold a road. The terrain was such that it would have been a lousy road. There was a lousy base. The other question that was unanswered was, I believe it was Kim asked if I had a conflict of interest, a personal conflict of interest by being on the Board of LIDC. I stated that I do not and I am no longer on the Board. I'm also no longer a member and that was effective on August 28th. She asked the date and I did not answer. So those questions being answered, we will now begin the public input. You didn't do a sign up, did you, Ceele?
I haven't started here, so if anyone else wants to sign up to it here, please.
Sign up only if you want to speak and if you don't sign up, I'm going to let you speak anyway. I'm just going to help out the people that signed up in case they want to speak and leave. First name on the list is Joe Bedore. I don't see it.
He'll be, I think he's coming.
Okay. Second name on the list is Chad Sterns.
Thank you. I did speak at the last meeting, so I'll keep what I have to say short. There's a lot of what I think is already on the record. First, I just wanted to talk about, there's just a few rumors out there that I wanted to dispel. There's a report, of course, published earlier in the year about 200 acres of land that we supposedly own. We do not actually own the 200 acres that are zoned industrial. Of those 200 industrial land acres that are available, we only actually own a fraction of that. There are, let's see, 43.1, 46, 46 and 35. So roughly 75 acres, give or take, is actually owned by LIDC. Of that, 43.1 acres is actually in a conservation easement for mitigation purposes. Another 3.7 acres are just odd-shaped small lots that you just can't develop on. You can't really hold any business of any size on. We do have a 24-acre lot up on top of Rotobec Drive, however, it's absolutely full of ledge and with a very small building site that is feasible, but access to it is cost prohibitive. To actually blast ledge to get to a very small lot is extremely expensive and just not, we're just not able to develop that at this time. And then there's a 5.6-acre lot that we own. That's between Burney Road and Interstate 93. It's about 50 feet wide and goes back, you know, for thousands of feet. It's just very narrow and you could never house any type of building on that. So I did want to just go over that, about the available land lots. Next, just looking at the 2014 vote, I did do some research. Thank God for the Internet and everything else. In 2014, as we know, it was an overwhelming vote in favor to sell the land. Looking a little bit more actually at the warrant article itself, right in the warrant article, it does say that the land would be sold for industrial development. It's spelled right out in the warrant article. In addition, at both the budget hearing and the deliberative session, when the article was brought up, it was brought up the fact that it would be transferred to LIDC for industrial development for nominal fee. At both meetings, Bruce Hadlock got up and said, you know what, we need to charge money for this, get money back on it. And then Brian Ward would counter and say, no, the reason you have to do this is because LIDC has done a great investment. They needed, they had development costs associated with it to bring businesses to town. So any work, any talk that was done on this article in 2014, it was very clear that this was going to go to LIDC for industrial development for nominal fee. And the only other thing I'd like to go over is just that, you know, yes, unemployment right now is very low, but as we know, all these rates are cyclical. We have high times, we have low times. Quite frankly, I don't want to wait till we get to 10% unemployment and then start thinking about doing something. We need to start planning now to be ready for the future. And quite frankly, the jobs that the industrial park will bring in are careers. I've got a lot of classmates that are working two to three jobs right now just to be able to provide for their families. And when we bring industrial jobs in, we bring in jobs to the park, they're good-paying careers with benefits. So just a few things I wanted to go over.
Next on my list is Jim McMath. Jim?
I was here at the last session, again, here to listen, see what's presented, as well as suggest the Board consider the abutter's concerns in their conditions, if there are conditions of the sale, what sort of things could be done, if it's a review of a development plan, or if it's discussion between the abutters and LIDC, further discussion between the abutters and LIDC. I think that if there's a middle road here, it'll help the overall situation. Not everyone's going to be happy in this room. Try and get a compromise and try and mitigate some of the impacts that the abutters are concerned with.
Thank you, Jim. Rudy?
I spoke last time, you know, with your chairman and also the people that they were here, they attended the meeting. My main concern is always taxation. Taxation is something, you know, that every time somebody mentions, you know, I gotta take something from my stomach. But anyway, I got paperwork over the year which I want to give you guys a count and maybe you guys can, this is from 2003 to 2016. It is nice, you know, that everybody talks about how much the industrial park, you know, brought up to this town. As you can see, Mr. Chairman, you know, from 2003 to 2016, just one time or two, you know, the taxes that went down. That's as many as industrial park. For the citizens in a little town, it lost them to nothing, nothing at all. 75% of the people that are working in industrial park, they are from Vermont. That's as many as, they grab the money and they bring them over there. It's nothing that brings us to the tax station now. Now, let's talk about this piece of land that you guys want to give it to. LIDC, you know, for a dollar. I, you know, I don't quite understand. LIDC, it's a really huge organization, you know. I know they have a bunch of volunteer stuff later, but when in 2014, you guys had put it on the high bills, okay, out. Everybody that is on the list, you know, started for, you know, for the President, Vice President, and so and so and so. All these guys, they belong to the town. They were Vice President, they were this, they were that. You know how many people on this list are here, they should just reduce themselves to be an LIDC because conflict of interest? Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are a conflict of interest. So honestly, they are a conflict of interest. And so some of the people that I don't want to mention names, that's all conflict of interest because I don't know that it would have come in your pocket, but you would have looked good because look at them, you know. Everybody is officers, is directors, stuff like that. If you guys would have just recruited yourself to be on this list over here, that would have been a completely different story because the people, you know, they would have think it different. But right now, that you recruit yourself, you know, I don't belong, you know, I don't belong to LIDC anymore. It's too late. The damage is already done, you know. But like I said, to me, I don't care about this list, I don't care. I care about taxation. And you know better than I do that if you give that property for $1, they're doing, you know, working on a piece of property, you know, infrastructure, stuff like that, we taxpayers are going to pay the consequences. I mean, you know, I really hope that you're going to think about that when you decide what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Brian Ward.
I have the detailed presentations, but I'd rather skip and let other people speak.
Okay. We'll save you to the end. Carrie Zunro.
Someone once said, you've got to dig the well before you get thirsty. And in thinking about that from a business development standpoint, it's constantly, well, consistently important to be able to look forward to having, Dave Bernsberger's here tonight, and I admire his ability to be able to have that 50,000-foot view. And sometimes in seeing that, though, you see the challenges that lie ahead and you see what could happen, but I appreciate that, I really do, that visionary. And of course, I hear from a lot of people being on the Northeast Kingdom Chamber Board many years ago and now on the Littleton Chamber Board, people especially from the Vermont side say, we could kick ourselves for not having Walmart come to town. And so that kind of rings true. And of course, at the time, they probably thought it was the right thing to do, that if we have big business come in, it's going to hurt the town. Now they're looking back in the rearview mirror saying it would have been the best decision. When you're in the thick of it, and I agree with what Jim had said too, I think if there's a way that we could, and it's not compromise with the residents, the property owners, I believe it's a collaboration and it would help all of us. We've got taxes. I'm a business owner here in town and I understand that. It's a business, it's driving business, and as Chad had mentioned, unemployment's low right now, but we've got to be able to dig the well. We've got to be forward-thinking in this. I'll tell you this, though, the homeowners, I appreciate the fact that they care about their property. You know, I'm in the process of reading that book, Hillbilly Elegy, if any of you, by J.D. Vance. If any of you have never read that, I would highly recommend it. It's sad, the type of homeownership and what that family are still going through in Kentucky. And they don't care, but I so appreciate the Dillutists, Sean Dodge, and the others that have property up there, that we do care about our property. And I'm thankful for that because the antithesis of that would not be good. But I think going back to what Jim said, as far as if we could come up with some sort of collaboration, I would like to see it from a business standpoint. I would love to see business growth. From a homeowner's standpoint, I understand that as well. So in digging the well and yet preserving the beauty in what is there is important. Have any of you ever been to Hilton, had the island? It's amazing what they can do there. You drive through the streets, they have the roads, and you never know beyond the pine trees, how there are shopping centers in there. And they have done the preservation and they have preserved the beauty and the tourism. It is, it is a end destination and I understand that, not necessarily Mount Eustace is an end destination, but to be able to preserve the beauty in the floor and the fauna, if you will, and still be able to continually bring business to Littleton is extremely important.
Do you call them the abutters hillbillies?
No, Sean, not at all.
There he is.
I'll wait till later, please. Thank you, everyone.
Greg Eastman.
I'd like to address the $1 element of this article. The, when Genfoot, we first learned Genfoot wanted to expand, they were actually looking all over New Hampshire and Vermont for a place to expand and consolidate a lot of their operations. And King Covey had brought up the idea that Littleton had owned, Littleton owned this piece of land that is zoned industrial, which would accommodate a size building that they were looking for. First, they were looking at 100,000 square feet, which became 120,000 square feet, and then it became 144,000 square feet of manufacturing and warehousing space. And that, to that end, to construct a building like that is expensive. And I believe Horizon Engineering did the study to say where that building would be situated on this piece of property. And given its topography and wetlands, the location of that building meant that there was going to be a very long driveway, a road into the building and associated costs with a long driveway and infrastructure costs. The dollar was, the idea was if the town sold this property to LIDC for a dollar, we would turn around and sell the property to Genfoot for a dollar because they were going to be looking at some very high infrastructure costs they would pay for to get in there. And it was so important to us, and is today, that if they do expand, we have a solution for them, is to retain them and retain their jobs, as we did with Tender, when Tender Corporation wanted to expand. We had all sorts of ideas and alternatives of what to do and frankly, through the kind hardness of Val Poulsen, to move his building, could Tender build or have built the building there in that. So we work in partnerships. We work and try to solve the problem at the time with Genfoot, they gave up on the idea to expand for a number of reasons. That's where the dollar came from. We were, we had an agreement with Tender, with Genfoot to sell them that property for a dollar plus any of LIDC's costs to make that transaction happen. So it wasn't, so that was above board there. LIDC's been a very good steward of the park, we think, from the 1970s, when this was started by Paul Goldrick and King Covey. As the shoe factories went out and we needed a lot of jobs, this was and has turned out to be a very, very good idea. The EDA thinks highly of this park. They had a big part in its construction. They paid half of the infrastructure cost to acquire and develop it. It has been done with partnerships with town, state, and federal organizations and entities locally. We've reinvested in it. We are about job creation. And, and we know what the job creation, what the job unemployment rate is today and what's out there. Well, it's not going to last forever like that. And we're going to need in this town to develop industrial and commercial space and more of it. We are, I'm concerned about our taxes and the burden that's going to be shifted to the residential taxpayer as we go on five, 10, 15 years down the road if we don't expand our tax base further. So I encourage the selectmen to honor the vote of 2014.
Thank you, Greg. Kim Deloris.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Sweet, for contributing the date of your resignation from the Board of the LIDC, although I do think that August 20th is much too close for this not to be a conflict of interest, one month after the first public hearing, so that you could just say that you're not, no longer affiliated with the LIDC. So I would just like you to ask yourselves if the vote that you make on behalf of the town is self-serving or not. Another question that needs to be answered from the last meeting was whether or not you have sold land in the past for a dollar. I don't know if you got that information.
What was that again, please?
Whether or not the selectmen have sold land for a dollar in the past.
I believe the answer to that was, it came up at earlier hearings, in the earlier part of the summer.
Right, that was the question, but you didn't have an answer.
The answer that I recall to that was, it was shown through tax stamps, a bunch of land transferred for the minimum amount of tax stamps. It doesn't say it was a dollar, but it shows, says that it was the minimum amount. And I recall seeing several of those.
And what has happened with that land? Is there, are there businesses?
That would be industrial park land.
Do you know anything?
Didn't we just determine, based on Mr. Eastman's comments, did you just say that Genfoot, that property was one of them that was for a dollar?
That was the proposal, yes. It never came to fruition, but that was the plan, yeah.
That's actually the parcel we're talking about that fell apart.
Okay. Just in reference to what Carrie was saying, and I appreciate, you know, the comments, but this, this particular issue is not about our property or our property taxes. This is not the same issue as that Article 2 was. This land is zoned industrial. I'm fine with that. It's got nothing to do with that. It's about giving it away for a dollar as a gift, in my mind. When there have been offers put on the land in excess of $80,000, so why would we want to give 43 acres of unusable land? Because the Conservation Commission has deemed it undevelopable. And I don't, you're supposed to take their comments into consideration. That was clear in the June 28th meeting, that it's undevelopable. And in fact, Tom Alth said, we feel it would pose a serious challenge to any proposed development. So I just don't, I mean, I'm all for the LIDC. I want to reiterate that again. This is not about me trying to stop business from coming in. I'm on it, I really do. But I don't understand when Chad is talking about the unusable land that they have, why you would want 43 acres more of unusable land? Let's, let's find better spots, you know? Maybe that's past Home Depot. But I just don't want to get these two issues mixed up with, you know, my working hard to protect that rural mountain that was, that is everyone's view and that would affect our property value. That's what we voted on in March and we protected that rural zone. So this, these are two completely separate issues. I'm not trying to protect my property value here. I'm trying to get the most money for our town and, and still looking into the future. Let's, let's be sensible here. This is, this is unusable land. The Conservation Committee has said so. I'll let somebody else speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. John Scott.
I think Chad may have information correctly pertaining to what she's saying.
Yeah.
He's raising his hand back here.
I was just going to answer the question about the last, the historic $1. Just for the last time that this, that transaction did happen was related to the coin company. The town sold land to LIDC so that we could have then facilitate the coin company move and expansion, and that currently pays $100,000 a year in taxes. So it may have been a dollar versus $80,000, but as you can see, it's quite an investment that's paid off.
Can I answer that?
Kim?
Or comment on that? That's fantastic. That was a great deal. You know, way to go. Congratulations, LIDC. That is fantastic. Now, is this land something that, you know, a huge facility could build upon? I don't think so.
Genfoot was ready to.
And what happened?
And Mr. Eastman just testified.
So why did that fall through?
I don't know.
Do we have something lined up for these 40 acres?
Currently?
Yes.
I, would Mr. Eastman or Mr. Sterns answer that?
No, there's no, there's nobody lined up to buy this, no.
Thank you.
We did have, it is developable. It has been studied. We had layout, costs, conceptual concepts.
So where have we gotten the information that it is developable when the Conservation Committee is deeming it not?
Was studied by Horizon Engineering.
Okay. Well, I, I'm just going to put out there again what Dorothy Corey from the Conservation Commission said. We could, we could be receiving income from this beautiful piece of land. She said there are some huge boulders there and there are some caves. It was a beautiful piece of land. She said, we might as well take this land that the town owns and make it into a town forest because we need more town forests in Littleton. The Conservation Committee could even give some money to the town if that would make a difference. The whole town could enjoy it and visitors. It would be a destination area. Tom Flardy then pledged $1,000 at the June 28th meeting of his money to support whatever the Conservation Committee needs to help accomplish that. So I'd just like to put that, and I really hope that's at the forefront of the Board's decision when we, and I'm more than happy to help, you know, push forward better land for the LIDC to use.
Thank you, Kim. John Scott.
I'm all for development. I'm all for companies coming in and we need jobs. They're 100% right. We're talking about two different issues. This issue is the town voted to sell, give you guys the right to sell our land, not give it away. So anything saying, oh, jobs, jobs, that's a totally different issue. It's talking about what the town wanted you guys to do. We did not want you to give away our tax money when we can buy a new dump truck, pay for a police officer, whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sean, I lied to you.
Sean, I lied, you got your two away. Fred Chisholm's ahead of you. Fred?
Good evening to the Select Board and to those of you who don't know me. I'm Fred Chisholm. I am the plant manager for Burnie here in Littleton. Our thought about it is that we hope we can work together to find a solution that meets or balances all the needs that are involved in this. As we look at it as a business, part of the challenge that we see is we need to have something here, whatever that is, that will bring more young couples here and have them settle and have them have kids. My plant, our average age is 49. Our average years of service is 12 and 1/2. What that means is I have an aging demographic that is going to be leaving my business over the next 10 years, and I'm perfectly okay with that. But I want, if those kids don't come here now, if we don't make it an interesting and attractive place for them to come down, however we work this out, I think we have to begin to think about that. Part of the challenge that we have sometimes is, in preserving something, we're trying to hold on to it so that it doesn't change. And I think the, really kind of the creative challenge that's in front of us is, how do we hold on to those things that are necessary while we adapt to the world that's changing around us? Because if we don't, I don't want to be St. Johnsbury in 20 years. St. J looks like it was a nice town. It doesn't look like it is a nice town. It looks like it was a nice town. And so, I would hope that however we work this out, we find a way that balances both the needs and the concerns of all involved with a vision toward the future. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, Sean, you're up.
So, the coin company acquired this land for a dollar. Did they get voted on at the town meeting or did the selectmen give it to them?
What was that again, sir?
The land that was given to the coin company for a dollar. Did they get that, did taxpayers voted on it or did the selectmen give it to them?
I don't recall. Is anyone else? Chad?
I believe actually the select, town meeting twice, if I'm correctly, once in March and once in December, town meeting voted to sell the land to LIDC, who then worked with the coin company on the development of the parcels.
So, it was on the ballot and it was voted on by the taxpayers.
Can you go? Next, Sean. Kevin Lo.
My name's Kevin, and I own Secure Network Services and Industrial Park. I bought the building in December 2011 when I came here to find that second home for my business. There's only one building available, and there was one lot available. I wasn't established to the point where I could take a lot and turn it into a building or give me a blank canvas, but had the right acreage and I could do it. So, I bought that one building, made off of wonder, and I say to sell it out to anyone that will listen that we have seven other buildings, seven of the businesses would be here in town today. Running especially high-tech companies, software companies, kind of jobs that we need, they can make more money in Boston, but they can come up here for quality life and the community, but it needs to be frankly, ready to go. I hired five people that previously worked at McDonald's, Napa, 7-Eleven, Staples, and Urban Landscaper. I made 10 to 12 bucks an hour per day. Those same people make 45, $65,000 a year plus benefits. I booked, I've got 40 people all together. The average salary is over $65,000. I think for a lot of these people, they need to be working two jobs or they would have left town. I have three more young people from Littleton that are in the pipelines, and they're starting off at entry level, but if they progress the way that they should, they'll be able to buy a house in this town, have a family in this town. So, again, small, up-and-coming companies are not like tender. We can't just go build a $100 million facility or whatever it costs. So, we need more buildings ready to go to take in these young, up-and-coming businesses. It does, we do hire here, I hire contractors from here, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last five years to all sorts of businesses in the area, and then hire people from the area. So, from my perspective, the other attractive thing to industrial park, from my perspective, was that there were tons of other businesses. So, to me, that meant there's opportunity to do business with them, to, there's actually business here. Constantly bringing up folks from Boston who say, "Wow, what a wonderful places it is. I'd like to put my equipment there. I'd like to have a second offsite data center here and discuss one more today." So, I don't think that would be possible if that building wasn't available. And I wonder how many of our ships have come and gone because we weren't ready. And so, I know there's lots of land, pockets of land everywhere, but the perception that there's no business in the North Country is incorrect, but we need to put them all in the same places, industrial business, high-tech. So, there is a benefit to keeping everyone together in industrial parks.
Thank you, Kevin. John DePamme.
I respect the way my rights.
I've seen three or four people come in since I gathered this list up, and I'm going to call on them in the order that I saw them come in. Dave Burnsberry was first.
I don't have any additional comments. You know, my focus from the first day I arrived here and got involved in the community was helping to build the tax base, to make it easier on the taxpayers. And I feel like the development of the industrial park, the further expansion of the industrial parks, a very key step in making that happen.
Thank you, Dave. Second person I saw come in was Tony Alakwa. Tony?
Yes, thank you for recognizing me. Is this like last time we're going to have a second session on the right of way? At that point, I have some stuff I would like to speak on.
Bruce Hadlock.
I still have a problem with the concept of a hearing of what you people have done and how you got it. That was the first thing. I still haven't figured out how you get to a hearing and putting it in for a dollar. I understand the fact that the town had the authority to give the authorization for the selectmen to sell. But you had to vote to put a hearing together for the sum of $1. This has come up before, and you never wanted to admit that was the first part. So, I really have a major problem with that. That was the first thing. I do not believe in the fact that if this property is sold, that the town should be getting their fair market value as far as money is concerned back on the money. My concern is that, I don't think, when you have a hearing, that you don't have a hearing, it really doesn't amount to anything if people don't listen to the hearing. But if you decide to make up what you want to make up on it, that's one problem that I have. So, I would prefer, on the mind, would be to say, if you're going to sell a thing on it, you should be getting your fair market value pertaining to it, whether you take the mortgage on the thing or not. So, you had said before, and if you sell it, whatever it is, get your money back, whether they get it back later on pertaining to it, as far as a note on it, and make sure you protect it by, as far as the wood on the property, they shouldn't have the rights to sell any of the wood off it, or they shouldn't have the rights to turn around and find gold on the property without paying the community back another thing on it, whatever. If they were selling it for gravel, or they decided to put a quarry up in the air out of it and pour in stone out of the thing on it. Nobody should be doing that if you're selling the property. It should be protected for whatever you put into something without the trust, number one. I have a major problem in, who authorized this lady attorney over here, and how much is that costing us? Okay? I, she's been here twice. How much is that costing us? Who authorized it? Who asked for this attorney? I'm asking you.
I just.
You, only you.
The selectmen did.
Did the selectmen vote on it and do it?
Yes.
All three of you?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was the first part. How much did it cost? They have, this lady over here has an attorney coming to these meetings.
We don't have a bill yet.
How much did the grant cost, this problem?
I have no idea.
You should be, if you don't have an idea and you're asking somebody to come give them a lousy job.
Yeah.
Okay? Period. That's number one. Second thing is, I noticed when I was on TV out there before, but I notice now that you, when I came in, that you had finally come out and said when you got down as a board member, I believe on the basis of what you've done, you should be excusing yourself from this, and you should never allow you to vote on anything pertaining to this sum of it because you did have a conflict of interest on the thing on it. And you should excuse yourself from any vote on it whatsoever. If not, you're doing exactly what you spoke about on the basis of a couple of meetings about it before. You in turn said you don't play favoritism or dealing with finesse. You had a conflict of interest. You did get that. Doesn't mean if you vote on this, you can't be put back on that board directives within an hour, actually, whatever you do. So, I think you should be excusing yourself from that 100% when it comes down to making a vote. And I also believe the fact that you shouldn't be putting this on here to vote as the selectmen, even though you have the authority. I think that you realize it should be put in front of the townspeople out there and voting as a group, whether the town people want to do it. And then, you can determine it by coming up with some figures as far as dollars and cents wise out of it, but I honestly don't think it should be for a dollar. That's my, my personal point of view on that. It should be getting your fair market value as far as the property is concerned. You represent not just the people of the community in here, you're representing outsiders that invested in our community, landowners, the people at home, the power companies, the stuff like that. You have a lot of people that have money in here. There's probably the biggest percentage of your businesses in the town all over town not owned by local people. Okay? As well as the people that you're talking about and hiring on it, a big percentage of those people do not live in the town of Littleton out of the thing on it. They work, I think it's probably around 40% of your workforce comes from the market, and a big percentage of them come from surrounding areas. It's been that way for years as far as that part is concerned. So, we are a hub as far as that part. Geographically, we are lousy as far as that, we're built into a corner. We're very close to that one. We have nothing but mountains going up on the sides. We don't have a big ability to be able to expand or run around here because of water. Geographically, we don't have any, very few house lots are available in the community. Out of it for sale purposes to have people come and expand on it. You really in turn are jumping the gun by going in and saying, "More industrial, more industrial, more industrial." You need a variety of things out of it, and it needs to come in from your planning boards and looking at it as to what you're going to do. This town in turn has not played out very well. We just happen to be right next to the river, which is what they used to do in all this town, to dump all the sewage down there from that part. And you have to look at, how big is your sewer point on it, as far as what can it capacity lie? So, it would have to be able to do it as far as that. I think that we can supply enough with electrical, and I do believe we have adequate water. We have a great water system as far as the town is concerned. But I don't think that we are, this should not be done, and it shouldn't be making a decision on the basis of selling it by the selectmen. You should be putting an article on the warrant, if anything, you should be putting it in here to go in and make your decisions on the basis of what you're going to put on the power for the town.
Thank you, Bruce. And we have Jason Reimers. Did I pronounce that right?
Pretty good. Reimers.
Reimers.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late.
That's all.
My name is Jason Reimers. I'm with the law firm, BCM Environmental and Land Law in Concord. And I represent Tom Flardy in this matter. He couldn't be here tonight because of longstanding obligation elsewhere. I'd like to echo Mr. Hadlock's request that, Mr. Sweet, you recuse yourself because your fiduciary responsibilities to both LIDC and to the town had created a conflict of interest. And I understand you stepped off the LIDC board, but that conflict of interest existed while this matter was being considered, the transfer to LIDC that has been in works for years. So, I would echo his request that you recuse yourself from this. I've got a few legal issues that I do want to talk about. One is that the 2014 warrant article did not authorize the Board to give this property away. A transfer for a dollar is not a sale. The IRS would classify this as a gift. And the proposed transfer is not an arms-length transaction. The 2014 warrant article authorized the Board to subdivide, sell, or exchange the property, and none of those things are happening with this proposed transfer. In addition to not qualifying as a sale, a dollar transfer wouldn't be an exchange for purposes of the warrant article, in part at least because the imbalance in what is being exchanged. And the exchange language further doesn't apply because the notice of public hearing for these hearings expressly states that the Board proposes to sell the property. So, that takes exchange off the table. So, given that this in reality is not a sale, that's why the 2014 warrant article did not authorize some current proposal. If the Board takes this action, it would likely be challenged in court, where the town would have to prevail on an argument that giving the land to the LIDC for $1 constitutes a subdivision, sale, or exchange of the property. And the citizens who voted on the 2014 warrant article had no reason to think from the language of that article that the property would be given away. Next, there's the statute RSA 4114A. Any action taken by the Board with respect to 4114A in reliance on these two hearings will be invalid and illegal. The Board has not followed the hearing process that's set out on the schedule, which makes tonight's meeting an illegal meeting. RSA 4114A states that the two public hearings cannot be more than 14 days apart, and today's the 15th day since the October 30th hearing. So, for this hearing to be legal, it should have happened yesterday at the latest. And that means that any action taken in reliance on these hearings would be invalid and illegal. And any action that the Board would take based on these hearings would be challenged in court, where the town would have to prevail on an argument that the statute's requirement of hearings 14 days apart really means 15 days apart. Regarding RSA 4114A, the Board has also taken the position that the transfer of the property does not apply to the transfer of Block 46 because of the 2014 warrant article. And so, and somehow in that logic is that 4114A does not apply despite the warrant article expressly stating that the authorized transfer would be quote-unquote "in accordance with RSA 4114A." And I think this is a legal error. RSA 4114A applies to the transfer for several reasons. And it would have applied had you been going through this process in 2014. The 2014 warrant article authorized the Board to subdivide, exchange, or sell in accordance with RSA 4114A. And the 2014 warrant article adopted the entirety of 4114A for this transaction, including the possibility of a petition. RSA 4114C states that, quote, "Towns may adopt the provisions of 4114A at any duly warned meeting." The 2014 town meeting was a duly warned meeting, and by approving the warrant article, the town adopted the provisions of RSA 4114A for this specific transaction. And they adopted the entire statute, not just certain parts, not just whole two hearings. And the warrant article was adopted by the very people, voters, who were authorized to adopt RSA 4114A. And the warrant article was adopted- And the warrant article was adopted at a duly noticed meeting, which is exactly where the voters are authorized to adopt RSA 4114. So nothing in 4114C says the statute cannot be adopted for a particular transfer only. And the warrant article contains all of the operative language that it would take to adopt 4114A. And the warrant article contains no language stating that the petition section of 4114A is not adopted. Rather, the warrant article authorizes the board to do the transfer in accordance with RSA 4114A. And any doubt you may have should be resolved by the fact that the town has since adopted RSA 4114A in general with regard to all transfers. That the board waited to go through this process for Lot 46 until after that general adoption simply reinforces the applicability of RSA 4114A to the transfer. Further, the May 24, 2017 hearing notice states that the transfer would be pursuant to 4114A. Same with the notice of public hearing for the June 28 hearing and same with the notice for the canceled July 10 hearing. These are legal admissions that the transfer of this property is subject to RSA 4114A. When my client, Tom Clardy, filed his petition over the summer, he was following 4114A. And when the people signed up the petition, they were following 4114A. And until very recently, you were following 4114A. I think that the town's current position is a stretch and I don't think it's supported. You've got a warrant article that specifically says the transfer will be considered in accordance with 4114A. Then, before the board exercises its authority, the town adopts 4114A in general, then the board begins the process and in doing so, all of the hearing notices and meeting minutes state that the 4114A process is being followed. Then the board stops the process in July after receiving a 4114A petition from a citizen with 104 signatures, where I believe only 25 are required. So after all of this, the town's current position that the statute doesn't apply has left a lot of us dumbfounded. Town meeting is right around the corner. I ask that the board save the town and its citizens' legal expenses and time continually and time continuing to redo this process or resolving it in superior court. Instead, I ask that you simply let the petition play out and that this be resolved by the voters in a few months. That would resolve all of those legal issues. And that would be resolved sooner than any court would reach its conclusions. And Mr. Clardy wanted me to give you his petition again, just in the hopes that we will honor it. I know I got here late and I believe that in regard to statements at a prior hearing by Attorney Whitelaw, that someone, there's another petition that was going to be filed and so I'll hand it off to her. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a couple people who asked to defer. Mary Edick was one of them. Mary?
Well, I wanted to wait because most of what I wanted to say has been stated. And I thank you for mentioning that November 27 selectmen's meeting is going to be the night that you vote. I've heard comments tonight by, I believe it was Mr. Lee and by Mr. Eastman, that relate to my point, which has been stated many times here tonight, is that I don't understand why it's being sold, this piece of property, for $1. Other than, Mr. Eastman mentioned why it wasn't before to the, whatever the company was that wanted to expand there. They wanted to sell it for $1 because it needed so much work on the piece of property to make it ready for a company to come in. So they, the company would be spending that money on that and they didn't want to have them spend it on the price of land. So that's a nice, nice gift. Why should we townspeople be paying for that? If they want to have a piece of property so bad, then they could pay the $89,000. Not the LIDC, but the company that's going to come in. So I think LIDC should, as Mr. Hadlock stated at the summer meetings, these hearings, something be written in if you're going to sell it for a dollar, that when and if that company buys the piece of property, whatever they buy it for, that they pay the town back. It's been stated to, oh, Mr. Lee, the point he made was beautiful. And, you know, I really appreciate the people from the industrial companies complex coming and telling us how great a job, the great job that has been done over the years and even for businesses in town. Mr. Lee mentioned something about the people who wanted to come here for those good jobs, the quality of life. The Conservation Commission mentioned, Corey, I can't think of the first name, it's Corey, mentioned that that could be, which Kim spoke of tonight, that that could be a fantastic park. That's the quality of life, not just a good income. The quality of life is having the parks, having the white mountains, having the clean air. I'm for having industrial jobs, more buildings. I think maybe look at other pieces of land that might be available somewhere in this town. Going to the dollar, I would like to mention the, in the discussion of the Article 17, during the May 20, 2014 Planning Board hearing, following the passage of that article by the town meeting, Selectman Seymour stated that it was the selectman's intent to be able to sell the properties without further action. Well, this is true, to sell it, not to give it away for a dollar. One of the selectmen had stated, and I believe that was stated in the June meeting, in the June hearings too, that that was not the intent of the selectman to put this article, that it wouldn't be given as a gift, that it would be sold. And you've already had, why, what I can't understand also is that why is the, why is there such a rush to do this? Why can't it be put on the ballot? I mean, you're not going to develop it, it's been said tonight, that it's not going to be developed for 10, or five, 10, 15 years. If someone comes in, I mean, let the voters vote whether they want to sell it for a dollar or sell it, put it up for bid. You've had one bid this summer for $27,000. Why should all the taxpayers suffer in having to pay for this piece of property being given to a developer? I think that's probably all, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mary.
I never, I didn't get on the list and I came in late. Am I here to say something?
Up to Mr. Warren, who's next.
Sure, thank you. My name's Dave Roachford, I live in Littleton, own a house here, own a business here. Originally grew up in Lancaster and 2000 where my family owned businesses and since going way back to the 70s. 2005, we came to a crossroads in our, in my life and I had a choice. I had to, we sold the businesses that we were, had deep roots in, in Lancaster and came to a crossroads where I could either start a new business in Lancaster or start a new business in Manchester or start a new business in Littleton. A son of the North Country, there was no way I was going to move to Manchester. Quality of life is immeasurable. So we narrowed it down to two choices, Lancaster or Littleton. And to start my business in Littleton was an obvious choice. Littleton, coming from somebody 20 miles north, looking at Littleton with envy, the surrounding towns are very envious of what has been done here in Littleton over the last 30, 40, 50 years. And to echo what Carrie said, the well was dug a long time ago and now we're seeing the water from that well. So I came here thinking and knowing that Littleton was the best of both worlds. They were pro-business, pro-development and the quality of life that was second to none. I support the transfer or sale of this property to LIDC. I think regardless of whether it's being used next year or 20 years from now, it's an opportunity to have a contiguous area of economic development in that part of town. And, you know, somebody said earlier, you know, we've got to diversify. Well, that development in that area actually leads to the diversification of the rest of the town. You know, there are, as somebody else said, thousands of people that come into town every day to go there. Well, on the way out of town, they stop and get gas. They stop at my business to pick up something that was phoned in. They stop at other businesses. So I understand a lot of the arguments being made here, both sides, but, you know, I think in this case, the benefits outweigh the, the, the pros outweigh the cons in this. So I would support that as, not only as a resident, but as a business owner here in town.
Thank you. Diane?
Is it okay, Brian?
Sure.
There are a lot of good thoughts here on both sides and I agree with Carrie, you know, the well has to be dug long before we reap the benefits. But because I'm on the budget committee, I get some information that maybe some of the others don't, don't get. And our 2016 to 2017 valuation change is something that really has opened my eyes to all the components that come together that create our tax base. And land value, residential building, manufactured housing, commercial and industrial, and our utilities. And in the last year, it was the commercial and the industrial that really kind of dug us out of a gutter. Our utilities valuation dropped significantly. But it was our commercial and our industrial that kind of got rid of that gap. So the utility valuation went down by 8 million. But our commercial and our industrial went up by 4 million. And our land value, our residential, and our manufactured housing flatlined. So if it wasn't for the industrial park and the commercial properties in our town, we need those because you never know what the fluctuation is going to be from one year to another and we depend on this. So I know there are a lot of things to consider, but this is something that we need to continually work on, is the expansion of our businesses. And it's not just for, it is for jobs, but it is also to help offset the taxes that we want to put into our schools, we want to put into other development, we want to put into our roads and all of those things. So it all comes together. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Brian?
Thank you. I haven't spoken in regard to these issues at any time, but I've watched on TV like many others. And the concern that I've had is the failure to understand what the historic relationship has been between the town of Littleton, the taxpayers, and the LIDC. I describe it, and in fact, I, at some time, I'd like to see the selectmen and the LIDC get together and rename it the Town of Littleton's Industrial Park, because that would be total truth in advertising. This was a town project. It was not LIDC's project. It was a town project. And I'm going to go through the historical economic investments that occurred. The partners in that partnership, which has been on for 45 years, and I got to disclose to Rudy and to everybody else, including attorney here, I was for 10 years, from 2000 to 94 to 2004, a director of LIDC. LIDC's been in business for 45 years. I wasn't on the board for 35. I haven't been on it for 13 years. I can guarantee you I won't be on it again. Now, the industrial park that we currently have right now is a $4 million investment in partnership, because that's what it is. Nine times, the Littleton taxpayers were asked and cumulatively, they put $1 million into that industrial park. Like, what's his name? $1 million? They put $1 million in nine different times. LIDC attained nine grants for 2.6 million. And LIDC reinvested from land sales, $4,000. Now, how was the money spent? $4,000 for land acquisition, 3.6 million in town-owned infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, electrical. Who got the large share of the partnership? The Town of Littleton. That infrastructure that was, went into place to that industrial park, the 2.6 million in grants and the $1 million, you see the two of them together, those two went together and those went right into the infrastructure of what we have right now. Now, the second part, that I have a question that really concerned me, was the failure to understand what LIDC is. It is a volunteer nonprofit. This is not a head. Nobody gets paid. For 45 years, people have volunteered their time. Mary Edick's there, one of library's best volunteers. For 45 years, citizens have volunteered their time. Please don't believe that this is some nonprofit that's making lots of money and everybody's going on trips with compensation. They are volunteers. They provide economic development services to the Town of Littleton at no expense to the taxpayer. All of the work they do, they've never charged the town a dime. Now, why does LIDC hold town, hold title to the town land for the industrial park? Three reasons. We have a town meeting form of government, which is wonderful in some parts and cumbersome in others. And when it comes to dealing with business, town meeting form of government is a hard thing to do because we vote once a year or we have a special town meeting in addition. So, the idea was LIDC could respond to businesses in a more timely manner than you could if you had it. So that's why I was here. The second one, many of those nine grants for 2.6 million require a non, a town nonprofit partnership. That nonprofit town, that nonprofit partnership is, is LIDC, based in Littleton, based upon volunteers and they worked for 45 years. The last thing is park management. That park didn't happen by accident. Let me give you an example on one lot, one of more recent ones, Bill. Federal Express, there's been a lot of talk about how what a challenge it is. You ain't kidding. You talk about wetlands, they got them all. Every single lot up there has had a wetland issue far as I know. But you look at the Federal, at Federal Express, their new building, that was a piece of property where a lot of fill had to be removed. There was wetlands issue. To get the wetland approach, they had to give 22 acres of conservation easement, which Chad mentioned. That was done so that Federal Express could come in. The fill was taken out, moved across the street to where Val Poulsen has his Poulsen, he owns it, rents it to McClure, it's kind of a good team partnership right there. All of that work was done by LIDC at no expense to the taxpayers. And now we have Federal Express operating in that location there in the second one. And the next slide. Now, the very first vote occurred in 1973 where the Littleton taxpayers, one of the three partners, voted to expend $15,000 to identify a site for a town industrial park. Now, you all talk about how long it takes to do things, your Don Tutman does. LIDC is, you could consider it a 45-year overnight success. It's taken that long. Phase one, from '73 to '82, just to get Burney and Tender, which is now in the new sick stitching, Littleton taxpayers voted, put $245,000, the biggest partner. LIDC got two grants for- LIDC got two grants for $135,000 and then LIDC contributed $126,000 for $506,000. That is the partnership that was in place. They all worked together to build the industrial park. Phase two, 1983 to 1994, the park expansion, which was the 2.1 mile access road and infrastructure to Mount Eustis. When you talk about being good neighbors, the original portion up here, traffic went through South Street to get. But LIDC and the town as partners made a commitment to the folks on South Street that they were going to build an access road to serve the industrial park. And did they ever. On that 2.1 mile, they saw one residential property on that access road. They kept their word. Now, to accomplish that, LIDC got six grants at $860,000. Littleton taxpayers put in $689,000. LIDC, $258,000 for $1,807,000. That built it right to the Mount Eustis Road. Phase three, from '94 to '98, the Mount Eustis Road infrastructure and access road to Lisbon Town Line and land transfers. In 1998, five lots were transferred to LIDC for park expansion. Five of them. I'll get into more detail later. Four town lots, which was 59 acres of the little property, which is the remaining balance that we're talking about this lot today. And the foster lot of 150. The town conveyed one lot and those were based upon two votes in '97. The first lot was conveyed and then the Foster lot was acquired. Of the five lots, the five Foster came in second. That's 115 acres. That has been part of the expansion for the industrial park since 1998. 20 years. So 174 acres for future park expansion. Now, why did they have that acreage? They needed to have land to qualify for an LIDC grant from EVA for $1.5 million. Where was that money spent? Infrastructure from the access road to the Lisbon Town Line. The taxpayers didn't pay for the water, the sewer, the electrical, the drainage for that entire road. They put $92,000 in and you know what that was for? That was to get site utilities to the transfer station. So almost 1.6 million went into that particular phase and what a grant it was. So all of that infrastructure that's on the Mount Eustis Road was paid for with the full understanding it was going to be used for industrial park expansion. EVA is not going to give the Town of Littleton, LIDC, $1.5 million to build a flume. It's for economic expansion. That was what the original intent was.
Is the town voting for all of this stuff though, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Phase four, town park expansion on existing lands. LIDC got a grant for $40,000. I believe the town put 20 in, did you guys? Or 15? There was a partnership between Water and Light, Littleton and LIDC for $80,000. And that's what Greg made the reference to, let's see, Horizons Engineering. They came in and they engineered the existing industrial park land. 47 acres or 43 acres that's under discussion today. The Foster property for park expansion. They identified wetlands, they did a whole lot more and they identified 17 potential lots for park expansion. The one thing I can guarantee you is that there will not be 17 lots there. When it gets built, pots and pieces get moved all over. There will not be 17, but they identified 17. And it's my understanding on this piece, they had a potential for three. So as far as the Conservation Commission, I believe they took no position and some people said it was going to be a challenge to develop. Absolutely correct. The whole industrial park has been an expansion. As Bruce said, we're a tough town to build anywhere. We have a hard time. Now, what else was LIDC done? And this is really what I guess is frustrated me the most, is the lack of appreciation for everything else LIDC has done, of which I can take little or no credit. 1992, next Monday, we're going to have our 25th celebration. The community came together. We had 19, excuse me, 17 vacancies on Main Street. We were in a tough position. LIDC, Bob Koppenheber, Ed Hennessy were original members that went to that. Littleton Main Street Organization, organized by Bob Koppenheber, LIDC director. The Littleton Area Learning Center, used to be the Summon Billy, used to be the Coin Company up on the Whitefield Road. That's a $3.5 million addition, which allows people all over Littleton, in Littleton, all over, to improve their life. Now, this one's a good one. Adelphia Cable. In 2001, we had a state of the art 1968 cable system. We had the worst one in the state. Adelphia owned it. However, there was a problem. The winds were that Adelphia was in financial trouble and there were some problems. They committed $5 million, but LIDC was told that, boy, they've got to get this thing done because we didn't know how long it was going to last. Well, LIDC hustled. They got the land, they got the location, they got it through the subdivision approval. And this $5 million was the last cable installation in the United States before Adelphia went bankrupt and the owners of it went to jail. You wouldn't have the cable network we have without LIDC. Hittner Retention, 2001, September 25th, 2001. Two weeks after 9/11, Hittner shows up at a selectman meeting. Paul McGolory was at the meeting and they said, we're leaving. The selectman appointed Bob Koppenheber to develop a plan to retain Hittner, LIDC. Christmas Eve, 2001, 330 jobs were saved. LIDC was responsible for that. North Country Broadband, right across the street from the diners, Chug Gregg came up. We told him collectively, we're not competitive. Verizon's not going to bring internet access. We need something more. Chug Gregg nodded his head, went to work with LIDC, became the link project. $4.8 million went to approve broadband. And thank goodness, where is Kevin? Right here. He was the missing link and I don't mean that, that's a chore. He was the guy we needed to be able to make the system work. And we now have expanded broadband after spending $4.8 million and using Kevin's skills. Now, another partner, the River District, $8.5 million project. Greg Eastman goes out, raises $51,000 with the tax credits. Why? A strong Main Street, a strong downtown is good to recruit jobs, like Fred Chisum said. You've got to have a community. You don't want to look like St. John's raised half there. Hittner Renaissance, Stan Fillion from LIDC. When they announced they were leaving, within 48 hours, the Hittner Renaissance team was put together for the sole purpose of supporting the Hittner employees. They were going to try to do something down the road, but those 135 employees, they knew that they weren't alone and somebody was there to help. Who did it? LIDC. Now, who went into the industrial park? 12 existing Littleton area businesses expanded into the industrial park. Why did they expand? Because their businesses grow. Why grew? Why did they go to the industrial park? It was the only place many of them could go. Fred Chisum's Burney. They first came to our area and linked it. They wanted to expand, shut down their operation in Connecticut or downsize it and come to Littleton. Very first tenant. All of these 12 businesses expanded. Val Poulsen built two locations. Tenda Corporations on their second location. Federal Express is on their second location. All of these businesses expanded. If you take away our ability for our local businesses to expand, those businesses are going somewhere else. So if you don't have land for it to expand, they're toast. We've got four new businesses. Genfoot, North Country Hydraulics, Schwan's and SNS. And actually, SNS can be up here because while they were a new business, Kevin's business was new, they went into an old building, the old Federal Express building. They recycled that. Another piece of property that has great potential, Sean Dodges. It's got town water and town sewer that was brought in by LIDC's grant. It's not bound by LIDC covenants and it's 89 acres according to the town website that's owned industrial. Sean's got a great piece of property there as does LIDC. Now, let's look at land transfer. That's been a big deal. We can't give away anything. LIDC has transferred 14 parcels and nor easements to the Town of Littleton for no consideration. Why? They're a partner in the industrial park. Town of Littleton in 1998 transferred four parcels, 59 acres to LIDC for park expansion for nominal consideration. I can't tell you how much it was. I don't know. But it wasn't much. '97, they voted 887 to 219 to convey what ultimately became two parcels from the Little property. 1997, they had a special town vote. This was for the Coin Company. They did two parcels. 2014, 845 to 141 parcel. Now, as far as the intent of that warrant, it was discussed in detail because Bruce and I had the opportunity to disagree. That's not a first and it won't be the last. Bruce said the same thing that he said today. He's totally consistent. He said to the selectmen, and it was discussed, that he felt LIDC should pay for the land. Didn't you, Bruce? He did. Both meetings. And I told him, it's all a prudence, that because of what we have for, I say that was the intent, was that the LIDC, for what they've done for this town and what they've done for its home, they're a partner and we should transfer. It is the best. And Bruce and I compared notes on the Little property. One of the things I said at that meeting was next to the Dutch getting Manhattan. The next best deal we ever got was the Little property. 125 acres in 1969. Paid $25,000, right Bruce? $5,000 a year for five years. Out of that, we have the transfer station, we have the Coin Company, we have a whole series of different things and then there's this last piece. Now, one of the questions obviously comes out was why wasn't the rest of that acreage transferred to LIDC when the rest of it was done? Good reason. At the time, the selectmen were exploring getting a new town garage. The town garage at that time was, I believe, 57, would have been 40 years old. Okay? And they knew that we would need a new one. So they considered it as a future site for Littleton Town Garage. They also considered it as a future site for sand and other aggregate stockpile. One of the things you have to have when you're running a town garage is aggregates for when there's a storm. I spoke to Larry Jackson about it because this was my recollection and I went back over it. Obviously, the town built a new town garage exactly where it was. And one of the reasons they didn't use this land was they did an analysis and that it would have cost too much to go to Mount Eustis to load up and go back and forth. But even more important was the time that it took. Where Mariatic lives, out in the rural area. If they had to go to Mount Eustis to load up the sand to get back to Mariatic's during a very bad storm, it just didn't work. And as Bruce said, we're tucked right up in a corner. And so time does make a difference when it comes to service, especially in winter. So they now keep their sand and other aggregate at the sewer treatment plant. And they have and that's where they use it. We keep our trucks in the, where the town garages, we keep our aggregate at the sewer treatment. It's working. Now, will the 2014 land transfer vote violate the existing rural character in the Mount Eustis Road? That's been an issue that a lot of people have talked about. I call it a history of coexistence. One of Littleton's greatest strengths is our willingness to coexist with multiple activities going on simultaneously. Franco, where your business is? On one side, you've got an apartment building. Next door up, you've got a municipal parking lot. And below you, you've got a theater across it, just in place you need it. The Methodist Church is close by. You've got a laundry mat. There's a whole series of things. The coexistence that occurs didn't just occur where Franco lives. It occurs all over town. Where Dabler, Rochwood businesses, he coexists on Union Street. Again, Ray and Osley's Little conveyed the 125 acres. It had been a sand pit and wood log. And it was supposed to be, get this, a future location for a regional landfill. Now, wouldn't that have been swell if that had been built? What impact would that have had on a rural area? Wasn't built, the other towns didn't want to go participate. However, the town eventually used the property for a stump and tire dump, which was cleaned up when the Coin Company came through. Now, we always hear about Northern Pass and all we've been wondering is where the heck did that public service line came from? Well, in 1971, the Town of Littleton conveyed a 150-foot by 3,211-foot high voltage transmission line easement on the Little property. Goes right through. Edison Publishing was the very first property that was built in that section of what maybe was called the backside of Mount Eustis. That was the 13,000 square foot facility. The Littleton Transfer Station, this gets into the coexistence. Brian told me that in 2016, 2,200, no, excuse me, 2,230 tons of garbage and recycling materials went through that transfer station. The old days, you would call it a dump, but more politically correct term, it's a transfer station. It works and it's break and I hope someday we'll name it after Tony Oliva's dad because he did a hell of a job. White Mountain Stitching. It's now DirecTV. A variance was given for a factory in a rural area with a limitation of 120 jobs. 1994, again, LIDC obtained a $1.5 million EVA grant for the one mile in infrastructure on Mount Eustis Road from the access road to the Lisbon Town Line to service the Little and Foster properties for park expansion. '97, '98, again, the transfer of the properties. '98, the Coin Company, it's now 86,000. It was originally 64, they put a 22,000 square foot addition. North Country Hydrolic, Masicky, at one time was called Greenville Screw. Both of these are part of the Little property. They were conveyed out. Poulsen McClure Shore Building. Now, what year did you build that? I know you got the lead in '98 from tolls. What year did you build the original one? Do you remember?
2001.
Okay, so 2001, I'm off by three years. Bought the land, three years later he didn't. Again, 2000, Sean and Frank acquired that 89 acres. What's interesting, the 89 acres that Sean and Frank acquired, they acquired from Foster Brothers, which is the same people that LIDC acquired 115 acres from. And actually, where Mrs. Duluthus and Mr. Scott live, that was a four lot subdivision done by Foster Brothers. So Foster Brothers got their hands over all of this stuff. And there are no view easements on any of these property that state that they can tell anybody else how to use their property. Tavernier Automotive is right beside Masicky's. Poulsen McClure built, moved their building, as Greg has said, and then Tenda Corporations built there. These are all the things that are going on on the backside. Some can say that's terrible, others, I look upon it as a period of coexistence. Now, let's look at our industrial park. The Town of Littleton, I'm told, has 34,400 acres. The Town Industrial Park will use approximately 450 acres for job creation and tax expansion if it's built where they have land right now, which has been planned for over 20 years. North Country has lost 14 manufacturing facilities for Littleton through history facilities, Montgomery Wire, Norton Pike. At time, at the peaks, that was our 1,100 jobs. Grafton and Cores Counties have lost one in four good manufacturing jobs since 2001. The Town of Littleton Industrial Park will provide the next generation of good paying jobs. Sean made a comment at the last meeting about at the point right now, we have a tight labor market. The problem is, is that in the 50s and 60s, we had 800 shoe shop jobs. They're not coming back. In 80s and 90s into the year 2000, we had over 800, almost 850 jobs at Hittner. Issue is they have 34 years, the longest anyone's ever been in that building, which was built in 1910. They're not coming back. Tax base. '95, we had a $241 million tax base. Split downs, built up to 794 in '09. And as Diane said, I think we were around almost 722 and now it's 718. We're not going in the right direction and we need to do more. Now, what does Littleton receive? $1.6 million in revenue from the industrial park for property taxes, electricity, water and sewer services in 2016. By 2020, it'll probably be $2 million. So for a $1 million investment, we're getting that $2 million yearly. That's a pretty good return. The final thing to say is, if you try to say that LIDC is this ruthless, big nonprofit full of prunes. It is a partner in the expansion of the industrial park. It provides economic development services. Mariatic's involved in the library. What has the library done? You know, the library, they provide their services. But let's look at the cost of the library over the last 45 years versus the cost of LIDC for operating. They probably have the library somewhere between 150,000 to 200,000 a year budget in that 45-year period. Seven to nine million dollars has gone into that budget. During that time period, LIDC has not charged the town a dime. So the idea that if you transfer this land, which there's a historical precedent, and then if you transfer this land to LIDC, then they can kill it, you're wrong. then if you transfer this land to LIDC, then they can kill it, you're wrong. Doesn't show up in history, and it won't show up on this particular piece. So, getting back again to Bruce's point, we argued about whether to convey that property. The selectmen said, we're going to transfer it to LIDC for future expansion, and I support it a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I see a couple people who have not spoken and whose names I don't have. So is there anyone who has not spoken who would like to speak? Rango.
About to break with tradition here and agree with Bruce. I don't have a dog in the fight. I don't have anything against the LIDC, and I don't have anything against the others. My point comes down to the effect of what you're doing with RSA forty-one. And as Bruce knows, we've argued this back and forth over the years. It's been voted in, it's been voted back out, voted back in. I always thought it was a good thing to have, because it gave you a way to act on a sale between town meetings, and there was a nice procedure set up to give everybody a chance to provide an input. But I think what I'm hearing tonight, and what I've heard on the other side of the table, was as far as something like RSA forty-one, you're trusting your selectmen with that authority on good faith. And that's my only point. I don't think giving away a piece of property for a dollar is the spirit of the law. It may be legal, I won't get into that, because I don't know nothing. But I don't think it's the spirit of the law to give land away. So I think in the interest of further developing trust between the board and the people, you might want to consider the suggestion that even though you may be able to do it properly illegally, maybe the best thing to do would be to put it on ballot this coming March, and let the entirety of the total population make the decision.
Thank you, Rod. For those of you that have forgotten, this is the first of two hearings. The second hearing is in regards to the right of way, which I didn't mention earlier, but you're trying to stick. That's the way it's got to go. So now, is there any other input on the transfer of the land? Any other new input on the transfer of the land? Ralph?
Yeah, I just want to reemphasize that I think these hearings are, in my opinion, they're illegal. You took the word from your lawyer that that petition was no good, because it didn't involve the right of way issue on it. However, the right of way issue is a totally separate piece of land. You don't need that transfer right now to be able to utilize that forty-two acres or sell that forty-two acres. It has nothing to do with that right of way. That right of way is totally separate from it, because you can go in easier with the right of way the way it is now. You can't get into that land with the right of way that you're planning, because you've got this big mountain you've got to go up, it's got to be poured out first. Because I was over there the other day, I walked through that property. So I'm saying that these meetings are illegal, you should go back to allowing that petition to take place, because your lawyer gave you bad information, you're acting on bad information, she should reboost herself, she shouldn't even build a town, because the information she gave you is not right. That article that they put forward has nothing to do with that right of way. It's two separate pieces of land, it's got nothing to do with each other, you can utilize that property, you can sell that property, you can get on that property, you can do anything with it right now without that right of way. So therefore, my information to you is, you should go ahead and put this on a town ballot in March, because if you continue to push this forward, I think sooner or later you're going to find out that this second set of hearings you're holding are illegal. She gave you bad information, and you should not be listening to that information. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Ralph.
What are Claire for having you by your side?
I'm glad you're here. You haven't spoken. Go ahead.
Just question, Ralph, just, when you're saying illegal is actually meaning not necessary?
No, I think when they stopped that petition from going through and came back to these hearings, that was an illegal move. That's an illegal move, because that petition...
We've got to, you've said that three or four times, and that's enough.
Okay, when she wanted to stop it, for that reason, it doesn't exist.
Yeah, just clarification, thank you.
Do you care to respond or not?
Only, my only response is that I thought that we had cleared up the misunderstanding last time, because my first explanation didn't do very well, that you're absolutely correct, the Warren article from two thousand fourteen didn't include the easement, and that's why there's two separate hearings, the one tonight on the land transfer, and then the second one on the easement. So that's all. And you had raised that last time, and I agreed with you that I had...
But you stopped that petition, and you're saying yourself, it's two separate issues. You stopped that petition from going forward, that petition should be what makes precedence here.
That didn't have to do with the right of way, however.
That's right.
Right, it didn't have to do with the right of way.
Yes, it does, but you said it.
Thank you, we have your input. Thank you. We will consider your input. Is there anyone else who has not spoken on the transfer of the land hearing? No one. Is there anyone else who would like to speak again and has new information that we haven't heard before? Kim?
I would just like to say something about Mr. Ward's speech, because that was fantastic information, and I just want to say for the tenth time that I value the LIDC. This is not a bash against the LIDC. Now, I want to know, how many people in this room have walked the land in question? Raise a hand. Who's walked it? None of the people that are for this land transfer?
I've been on that land years ago. I walked my dog on that land, that's when I was a employee for the coin company.
So would you agree...
It's a matter with the land.
Would you agree with the Conservation Commission that it's very adverse terrain, very steep and wet, wet enough in areas that it definitely could propose a problem?
We know all that, Kim. We have the reports from the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
They are recorded.
So I'm wondering if this is a good investment for LIDC? That's my question.
Are you asking made that question?
No, I would like to just put that on the record. It has been, they have had some great investments in the past. It seems to me that everything that Mr. Ward showed, these were all, they all went to vote, these, you know, land transfers. They all went to vote for a nominal fee. So people knew what they were getting into. They knew, did they know? I'd like to know if, when they voted on it, if they knew if, you know, what business was going to be coming in.
The answer is most likely no.
Okay. So all we want, all that our petition was asking for was to put this to vote, just like the other land transfers.
I understand that.
And so I'd just like to also reiterate that paying the lawyer to stop us from exercising our right to vote is pretty appalling.
No, that's not a fair statement.
Yeah.
It is how?
As soon as attorneys appear at meetings, we're obligated, as your representatives, to be covered by counsel as well, as soon as that occurs. And it occurred initially from your side of this argument, and a lawyer appeared, in fact, a law firm appeared. We would not be doing justice to this community as your elected officials by not having counsel representing us, just so that everything goes correctly. Lawyers talk to lawyers. We don't really necessarily ever want to talk to an attorney, because we're not trained in this area as our attorneys are, these attorneys sitting here and attorneys in the audience. As soon as an attorney is initiated, if you ever sit on an elected board, you'll understand as a businessman, as soon as an attorney appears before you representing someone, you have to have an attorney on your side of this, at least to listen to whatever your arguments are and to give you advice. This is just common practice here, and it's been here since day one.
You're not correct.
Well, I'm correct, I'm sorry.
No, you're out of order. All right, I'm out of order.
Is there anyone else? Excuse me, Kimberly, you...
No, I'm through, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Is there anyone else who would like to speak again? See your hand, Rudy, but Bruce was up first, and this is new testimony, please.
Ready? New. Very short. You people have a fiduciary responsibility to work on behalf of the town when you're making decisions.
We're aware of that, thank you.
You may be aware of it, but it doesn't come up, and it's not been presented. It's new, and the fact is, when you make decisions on what you have to do, you have to represent the whole community, and it's based on the financial part of fiduciary responsibility. That's what you have to do. So you cannot just suddenly throw things out and sell things for a dollar. You've got to do it when you make the decisions on that, to represent the whole community.
You brought that up in a previous hearing, and I think you can... Rudy?
I just want to respond to Mr. Bratz here now, but the comment that by just, you know, talking without the intervention of the two attorneys, it would have done no rights for the decision ship. I just want to mention something. If you want to do something good for this population over here, why don't you ask everybody, all the taxpayers, three thousand one hundred taxpayers, not just the seven hundred fifty that they go to vote? You want to do something good for this town? Send it later to everybody. See what everybody says, if they want to sell that property for one dollar. That's the way you've been doing some good for this town, not just talking.
Thank you, Ruth. Is there anyone else who would like to speak again on the land transfer? Seeing no one, I'm closing that hearing and opening the second hearing, which is the town of Littleton Board of Selectmen proposed to exchange easements with the Littleton Industrial Development Corporation over the town's parcel of land with the transfer station tax map ninety-nine, lot seventeen. LIDC currently owns the parcel identified on map one oh two, lot seven, which includes a right of way over the parentheses Old Daily Farm Road. This road has changed location on portions of lot ninety-nine seventeen based on the plan approved by the Planning Board in two thousand fourteen. The Select Board proposes to give LIDC a right of way over the new road location in exchange for LIDC releasing, excuse me, any claim to the old easement. These conveyances carry no cost to the town. I'm going to dispense with the list and ask simply, is there anyone who would like to speak and give some public input on this issue?
Tony? Well, do we have a map of the way, do we have a photo of the map of the land?
My hat is it, so we...
Oh, my God. We have to...
We do have a large paper map, I believe. Milton, did you bring that?
Yeah, you're right. So quick, wow, I won't tell a quick story, but thank you for the history lesson, the economic lesson. I had a young student in my office today, and I asked him what he was going to do, and he's like, I want to be a welder. And I go, great, that's math, but you need to study the other things. You need the history, the economics. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you for the economics and the history lesson. So tonight I have a challenge for the selectmen, I have a challenge for the LIDC, who's done wonderful things. And Mr. Chairman, you mentioned it last week, at the very end of the meeting, I don't know if you remember, you said this, conditions. It looks like we are going to be going into a perfect storm, or it looks like, wow, I feel smart now just listening to that, it sounds like we have some great information there, towards the land lawyer. It seems like we're going to head towards a place where we don't want to be. And that spending money, we don't have money to spend, we're talking about generating money, we're talking about generating jobs, generating tax base, making sure our main street is full. The last thing we need to do is lawyer up. Do we have that money in our budget? No?
We have it if we need it, yeah.
Yeah, that's horrible, we shouldn't have to spend it. So here's another thing I...
As Mr. Bratz expressed, you know, when you create the situation, there are new boundaries established, and you have to function within those boundaries.
Yeah. So one of the things my thought was, let's try to avoid that, let's try to get to yes, and how can we do that? Well, we've got two parcels of land, and we have a right of way. We have conditions. If we do the right of way, the change of the right of way, it appears to me during the last meeting, and thank you for those who weren't there to come out tonight, the transfer station, the fire pit's going to be impacted, the glass pit is going to be impacted. I do have some knowledge about the transfer station, and I do know that commodity prices go up and down. One thing that this town has in our transfer station that no other transfer station has, that I'm aware of, and I've seen a lot of them, space, space. When, four or five years ago, when China was buying everything, woo, the transfer station looked really well, right? Because they were generating income. When all of a sudden the commodities were stopped being bought overseas, what we have the ability to do? Anyone?
Stockpile.
Stockpile. Sell it high, right? You know, so we can build it up, build it up. So we have space. But if we do this easement, we're going to lose that space. Lose our, so, wow, so now it does start costing us money, because we've got to maximize every little inch. Last time I spoke, I said we have to come back, and everyone has to just pull a little bit together, even just a little inch, everyone pulls together. But here's another example, thinking outside the box, we've got to ensure that that transfer station is self-sustaining, right? We want to make money there.
It's not self-sustained.
Well, we want to try. We don't want to just give up.
We were toward that goal.
Right. Public input, please.
Well, it's like he's...
No, 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 I'm not afraid.
I thought you were asking...
No, keep going track here.
Yeah, so my thought was, it's very simple, it's very simple. And I might get their number wrong, fourteen dash forty-one A also gives the selectmen the ability to acquire land. So my thought is, why not have the selectmen, LIDC, the Conservation Committee, the town of Littleton, because it's going to be engineered, and whoever else wants to be on that committee, let's avoid the lawyers and try to work this out. And I don't know if there's any time that we have to do this in the next two weeks before the twenty-seventh or Warren article, but find out, figure out a way where we can, they can have their lot here, they can have their easement, but then maybe the town of Littleton or the LIDC can sell the land back to the municipality who has the ability to buy it, buy a section of that land, including the ridge line, that's not really developable. You know, and everyone wins, right? No one loses. The only one that loses in that deal are the lawyers, because they won't make the money. Because that's where we're going. You all know it, you can all hear it, you know? So that's kind of my thought. I don't see why, there's a lot of smart people in this room, why we all can't get together and try to figure this out. And that way, in twenty-five years, when Chad is here going over everything they've done at LIDC, they can say, now, one day, back in two thousand seventeen, well, because Chad, you'll be the last one standing. Remember that day that the town of Littleton, as a partner with the LIDC, took the responsibility to preserve the environment and for the lawn, because that land is useless, or on top of that ridge? And that's what makes it attractive to, oh, they're gone, makes it attractive to the millennials, they want to see space, they want to see green space. We've got to create balance, Bruce, you're right, we're living in the valley. If you read the Plan Board minutes down in Lincoln, New Hampshire, their main street could significantly change within the next couple of years. You know why? Because there's no buildable space. There's one lot in that town, you see it when you drive in, and they're going to put a hotel in there. That's what Lincoln needs, another hotel, that's the last buildable space. We too are running out of buildable space, so it is our fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we maximize everything that we have, that all our resources. And for the love of God, let's take our time, let's tread slowly. And if it goes to Warren, I feel that's fine. Well, let's try to find a different way. That's my input, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony.
Bruce, I believe that Tony's right, I believe that the avenue of what you have is the Planning Board on it, and from your talk, what you people can do is you can direct the Planning Board with a statement for what it is. If you ask them what to do as far as changing this, they can...
If you ask them what to do as far as changing this, they can ask the subcommittees and put people onto it too, but what you should be doing is, I just don't know where this is going with the type of a hearing that you're having in here, other than discussion from the point of what it is, because I don't think that this is, again, it's going to make an awful mess if you continually try to process the thing as far as changing it around. But if you go back, and you people as a Slackman, go back and direct the Planning Board to look at it, actually ask the question of what they would do, and how they would propose changing it, and if they need a subcommittee, they get a subcommittee, and then they come back to you people with a recommendation on it, and that's what I believe you should be doing.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the right-of-way issue? Chad?
Let's speak, because this meeting pertains to the right-of-way and not the rest of the properties and everything else. The real reason that we initially, you know, need to change the right-of-way is really just to straighten this out, it's, you know, with the Daley Farm, Daley Farm Road, it's an old goat path, and it really needs to be straightened out to make safe for travel for future, when future development does go in there. So when this right-of-way, because we do have a right-of-way to lot 1027 currently, which is depicted there, and what the new right-of-way, as this hearing pertains to, would really just straighten that out and make it much more applicable, much more safe for those maintaining the road, for those traveling the road when it is built in the future. And regarding the pit, you know, there's still, I want to think, what, 40, 50 acres still left on the transfer station lot, if I'm correct? There's still ample land to store as much materials as you would need.
Thank you. Jason, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I did know, since we're in a new public hearing, if I should just restate a couple of the points I made before, if they're on the record, as far as your recusal and as far as the 4114A regarding the 15 days.
Those are on the record.
Okay, thank you.
I assure you. Is there anyone? Kim?
Since Attorney White lost, stated in the October 30th meeting, that the problem with the first petition was that it didn't include the right-of-way. We have a second petition with 70 signatures that includes the right-of-way.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Any other public input? This hearing is closed.
Thank you. Thank you.